All right, it is 7:00 PM. I'd like to call this meeting to order. While this meeting is being held in person, we are also offering the option to participate through Zoom if preferred. Instructions on how to participate virtually are included in the City Council Calendar item listed on the front page of missionks.org. Please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Robin, please call the roll.
Hayden Champosi, here. Boltinghouse?
Here.
Ryan?
Here.
Kring?
Here.
Schmidt?
Here.
Capender Davis?
Here.
Josie?
Here.
All right, we have four special presentations this evening. So first, we will hear from Terry Baugh for a presentation about the 2024 Go Green Environmental Fair. Terry, do you and your maybe co-presenters want to come on up? Just make sure the microphone's on. You should see a green light, I think.
It looks like it's on. Can you hear me? Kathy Boyer Shetzel, resident of Mission and co-chair with Terry for the Environmental Fair. So you all know Terry, and this is Karen Sexton, who's representing Mission Woods and Westwood Hills and Mission.
Oh, I'll get this right. I'm Karen Sexton. I'm on the City Council for Westwood Hills and was the rep for this project. And I'm also appearing here with great thanks from Mayor Robert Teetz, who is with Mission Woods.
So you can actually picture that there are nine folks that are standing here. We're the three that were able to be here tonight. And we're calling it Penn and Natalie, is that it? So if we could call it Penn and Natalie? So this was actually the first of the, well, you all know that the Powell Center has been the host venue for the three Go Green Environmental Fairs. And this is the actually first one. I've been out of town the first two. So I actually witnessed the incredible responsiveness and professionalism of Powell Center staff. And at our last Environmental Fair Steering Committee, everyone who has served on the committee and was there at all three events, actually, commented on the professionalism, responsiveness, and just customer service that has been the branding of Powell Center. And it's not just the professionalism and customer service, but it's just the exquisite facility and it's so clean. And we know that it's like before Thanksgiving and you're hosting it and you've cleaned the house. But so we know a little bit of that went on. But one story that I want to say about Penn is it was kind of drizzly and cold and one of our venues was doing e-cycling by this truck. And Penn, somehow or another magician, Penn, got a tent or something, just out of the blue, so that the people that were working on that. So it just, the professionalism and responsiveness and Natalie is just a gem. All three years. So we wanted to acknowledge what a fine gem, not only the Powell Center, but the professionals that represent our city. And Terry's holding the certificate and there is the logo of all the nine cities that are on the certificate. So Penn and Natalie and the whole staff, thank you very much.
Thank you. You guys were great.
All right, thank you. Our second special presentation this evening is a proclamation recognizing Shop Small Saturday, which will be observed on Saturday after Thanksgiving, November 30. As we head into the holiday season, I want to remind all of us that shopping small doesn't just benefit our local shops, it strengthens our entire city. When you shop at a locally owned business, you're helping create jobs, boost our local economy, and maintain the unique character that makes Mission such a wonderful place to live, work, and visit. The holiday season is the perfect time to explore the diverse offerings of our small businesses, from unique gifts to personalized services. But the benefits of shopping local don't end here. Throughout the year, be sure to support your local businesses, which creates a ripple effect, helping sustain our community's growth and resilience. Next, we're going to bring Penn back up to recognize his new staff member.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm joined tonight with Will Hand, who is our newest full-time team member at the Powell Community Center in our Parks and Recreation Department. Will is joining us as a events and programs coordinator. He's just recently completed a four-month internship at Shawnee Parks and Recreation and graduated from Emporia State, having played pitcher on their baseball team. So if you guys want any insights on how maybe the KC Royals can extend a little further in the postseason, he's your guy. But I appreciate the opportunity to introduce you to Will and give him a moment to share.
First, I just want to say thank you to Council, Mayor, and City staff. I'm excited to meet all of you, and I'm sure I'll see you all at maybe the Holiday Lights and Festive Sites Festival. So feel free to come up and say hi. It would be a pleasure to meet all of you. Thank you.
All right, next, we will have our presentation to outgoing Councilmember Trent Boltinghouse. I think Laura, you'll be up first with a few words, and then I have a couple of things to say as well.
Well, I'm sort of winging this, which all of you up there know is not something that I do very often. But tonight is definitely one of those bittersweet moments as we prepare to send Trent off into the next chapter of his life and his time on the council. So as I have thought about kind of my relationship with Trent over the last six years, we shared a connection to Southeast Kansas. I was a Pittsburgh girl and he was a Gerard kid. And it was very humbling, one of the first times we sat down and I realized that his high school English teacher was in my sister's graduating class. That was two years after I graduated. To kind of put that all in perspective for me very, very, very quickly, but came to appreciate that, I think, you know, you're mature beyond your years. And it has been absolutely my pleasure, and I know the pleasure of the Ward One residents and the council to have you in service to this community since 2019. So I just wanted to share, broke down your name into a couple of descriptive words that I wanted to share. So as we think about Trent, I think we would all agree that he's very thoughtful in everything that he does. He sometimes suffers from the same disease that I do, and that's overthinking it once you've made the decision. But you are incredibly concerned about doing the right thing for the right reasons, and that has benefited Ward One and the entire city. You're responsive. It has been one of the key points I know in your campaigns and your service on the City Council to represent your constituents, to listen, to get them answers, even if it was maybe not the answer they were looking for, but to really close those communication loops. You're engaged, you're energetic, there's a certain energy that you bring to everything that you do, and that makes that fun. The N was a little bit hard, and I had to take some polls this afternoon in thinking about that. So we came up with two nerdy, but in a good, but in a good way, right? Is that fair? And so, you know, that's one of the things I really appreciate about you. You, you know, share your passions, your interests with all of us. But I think noble is the other N word that we would really describe in terms of the way you carry yourself and the way you approach your service to this community. And the last T, I think, is transformative. You ran for this office to make a difference in this community, and I hope that you know, as you close this chapter on the City Council, that you have done that. There have been many things that you have touched that have been transformative. Not only have we watched you grow as a council member, but we have also had the opportunity to watch you become a father in your tenure here on the council. And, you know, you, as community advocate, champion of all things Mission, you have stepped into that role of fatherhood with no less passion, no less commitment, and you're amazing at that. And we can hardly wait to see how that continues to grow in the years ahead. I know when you came to me and shared with me that you had found a place that sort of aligned with what you wanted for your family. I think it was funny, it was almost like the description of a mullet. He said, "It's Johnson County in the front and Gerard in the back," I think is what you said. And I think, you know, I couldn't be more thrilled for you to find something that meets those goals that you and Helen have together for your family. So on behalf of myself, I know I speak from the council who will probably have plenty of other things to say from the staff, your support of the staff has been really tremendous, and we don't take that for granted. But thank you. Thank you for your service. We're gonna miss you. And you better still call me and come back and have coffee to solve all the world's problems, right? So we do have a plaque for you, but I don't know, Mayor, if you want to make some comments and we can kind of do that at the end.
Yeah, I think you'll hear echoes of what Laura said and what I have to say, which is always a good sign, you know, we must be on to something. So, you know, I was trying to come up with one word to describe your approach to service as a council member, and that would be conscientious for a lot of the reasons that Laura said. I think you're always striving to better understand all sides of an issue and to do ultimately what is right for Mission. I especially respect your efforts to meet people where they are and to focus on resident outreach and communication. I know Word One meetings have been a big success, and you all have a loyal following that come out every time. I think, you know, I want to flag too that your time on council has been marked by several big wins that your advocacy helped bring about. Among those would be LED streetlight conversion, the FCIP Facility Conservation Improvement Program for the Community Center and other city facilities, and kind of pushing for the PCC feasibility study and making sure the Community Center can continue to be a success. And along with those, I would also flag what Laura said about staff support and staff relationships. And I think you've done a lot there to just to cement that, you know, how well council and staff can work together. More than that, I think you've always, beyond those, you know, just policy wins, I think you've always stepped up to lead, most recently as council president. And I've always been able to rely on you as a trusted sounding board and a friend. On a personal note, I also wanted to thank you for stepping up even more so while I was out on my maternity leave with McKenzie in your role as council president and filling in for a lot of ribbon cuttings for me when I was super pregnant and it was 100 degrees outside, and then also meetings right after she was born. So really appreciate that as well. So I will miss your, you know, contributions on council as a colleague, but I know we'll get to remain friends. And while you're leaving Mission, I suspect that you won't be leaving public service for long. And so I'm excited to see what you'll get up to in my hometown of Overland Park. So I'm sure you'll do Overland Park as well as you've done Mission. Lastly, the first man of Mission, another Southeast Kansas former resident, wanted me to let you know that he likes you because you're a Southwest Kansas man, and he said that you would know what that meant. So we'll leave that, leave that as it is. So Trent, we're gonna miss having you here, but I know you'll still be around, and thank you so much for your service. And with that, we'll open up to if anyone on council wants to make any remarks, and then Trent will let you make some closing comments.
Yeah, Debbie?
Just to give you a quick example of how Trent represents the city in such a positive manner, in March of the year, we go to DC to represent different things going on in the city to our different congressional liaison congressional people. And we had an opportunity to go see Senator Moran. And Trent is outside, we're getting ready, and we're getting ready to go in. And Trent's like, you know, he's so meticulous about the way he looks, about the way he speaks, everything. And he says, "Okay, now we're gonna go this." I said, "You know, he's gonna want to know about your family. He's gonna want to know about your neighborhood because that's how he is." So we get in there and everything, and so I start talking to Jerry, and we talk about, you know, things going on in Mission. And then Trent says, "And I'm from Gerard, Kansas." And he's like, "Yes." And I think that made such a spark with him that a young man coming through in a city council position from a smaller town and bringing forth those family values that Trent has just done phenomenal with, he just really speaks well of what we are in Mission. It's the younger group that's coming in and he's taken over and just council president, he's second to none. He's done a great job. So I just want to thank him. And I love being kind of a quasi-grandma to little Gerard. So that's gonna be the thing I probably miss the most. But anyway, we appreciate everything you've done. You've done such a respectful job here, and it's been noted.
Yeah, Mary?
Okay, I wrote it because, yeah, I cry, and that's what I do. Everybody knows that. Okay, so as many of you know, I first met Trent in college in a Latin American Studies class, a setting neither of us probably imagined would lead to serving on a council together a decade later. Since then, our lives have become paralleled in many ways. We welcomed our first children just three weeks apart, bonded over antique tractor trivia, and spent plenty of evenings crafting our dream when we were young festival lineups. Serving alongside Trent on this council has been nothing short of an honor. His dedication, sharp insight, and steady commitment to making our city better have been genuinely inspiring. But beyond the council chambers, it's been an even greater privilege to call Trent a friend. From watching our kids grow up side by side to navigating parenthoods and sharing family moments, it's been a joy to have you in my life. As you step away from this role, I want to thank you not just for your tireless service to your community, but for your friendship and the laughter, wisdom, and camaraderie you've shared. Your contributions here will leave a lasting legacy, and I can't wait to see what the next chapter holds for you.
Yeah, Brian and Ben?
I think every time Trent, you walk into the room, I'm always like, "There's a guy who just takes this seriously." And I've always just really appreciated your sense of humor, but also the very leveled way in which you provide your opinions. I think it's really tough to be seen as taking this seriously, but also being really good humor about it. And I think you strike that balance perfectly. I'll just keep this short and sweet and just say I wish you the absolute best of luck.
Well, Trent, I think your impact on the council and community, I don't think I could possibly add anything else that people haven't already said in fantastic ways. But just personally, I wanted to take a minute to note that you've gone out of your way to be a friend and mentor and supporter to me. And it's been, since before I took office, and that's meant a great deal. It's been great working with you. It's been fantastic for our families to get to know each other. And we'll certainly miss your presence on the council and hope to see you around and spend more time with all of you.
Yeah, sure.
And if Ken Davis is here to say obrigado por todo. I butchered it bad, but thank you for everything you've done and for keeping Ken's Portuguese skills up fresh.
Anything else? Trent, do you have anything you want to add?
I'll just keep it brief, always kind of humbling to just sit here and hear a bunch of nice things about you from a bunch of people. Thank you for that. My wife and our son are in the audience, and my mom and dad are here too. So that means a lot that they're all here to support me. They were all really instrumental in letting me do this the last few years, and I'm really happy that, you know, I get to share this moment with them too. And all of you, I will miss all of you a lot. You're all my friends. I just had a great time every time it was council here. It never felt like it was work. I always knew that I'd get to joke with all of you and get to talk about, you know, things to move the community forward. Staff, you all were instrumental too, especially everyone I got really lucky to spend time with over the last few years. You know, Laura, I'll really look forward to our continued meetings. And, you know, those are always just wonderful to get to spend time with you. And then Robin and Justin, you know, just, it was always like the routine. I'd come into the office, it's like, "Go have my serious meeting with Laura," then I get to go talk golf with Justin, and then Robin and I would get to talk about what's going on in, you know, Waterworks Park area and Claire growing up too. Brian, you know, you were always really someone I enjoyed talking with too about, you know, baseball and just your approach to looking at things on staff was always really inspiring. And so I'll really miss all of you. And then finally, recently, Dan, you know, the way that the Police Department opened up your doors to me, letting me do the Citizens Academy and having such a wonderful experience with your deputies and lieutenants, really, really a cool experience. And so I wanted to just share my thanks for that too. And then finally, the residents of Ward One, oh, and Penn and Stephanie too, you know, Parks and Rec, had a great time getting to come in and, you know, be a part of the Community Center plan forward. It was pretty fitting. I got to just hear that right before this meeting. That was a great coda to my time here. And Stephanie, you and Brent, Public Works has always been extremely receptive to any kind of inquiries I've ever had, and you guys do great work. And I love now when I drive on the highway and see a giant, you know, shed that's half open with salt pouring out. I know why that's there in various towns. So that's, that's a lot of fun for trivia, I guess, if nothing else. But I'm sure there's others I've missed, you know, Kevin Wimpy with Gilmore and Bell, other lawyers, you know, folks who we just always got a chance to hear great presentations from. So kind of hard to think of everybody right now, but just really appreciative. And to the residents of Ward One, who elected me and re-elected me, thank you. I'll always have a special spot for Mission in my heart, and I'm very proud of the time I got to serve here.
Your family to come forward? All right, we will now move into our public hearings for the evening. We do have one public hearing tonight related to the tax increment financing redevelopment project plan for 5665 Fox Ridge. First, I will officially open the public hearing. We will hear first from our city administrator, Laura Smith. Following her presentation and a brief presentation from the developer, we will have the opportunity for any member of the public that would like to make a comment on the tax increment financing redevelopment project to make their comments. Come on up, Laura.
Thank you, Mayor. I actually will probably follow Mr. Messmer with Block. He's going, you saw his presentation, heard his presentation at our November committee meeting, but I've asked him to just sort of give a condensed version of that tonight to be on the record for the public hearing. And then I can share some additional information. Mr. Kimmel is unable to be with us tonight, but kind of touch on financials and where we are in the process. So with that, I would invite Aaron Messmer with Block to come forward and give his presentation.
Great.
Thank you, members of the council, for your time. I do recognize that we're doing a repeat here, so I'll try to keep it brief. But just did want to walk through the presentation like Laura suggested. So the site that we're working on is at 56 and Fox Ridge. We have a multifamily plan there that's been previously approved. If we can go to the next slide, please. There we go. As far as location goes, it's on the site of the former JCPenney Call Center. There's not much activity there right now. It's just an empty building and parking lot. It's near Broadmoor Park, which you can see here, which comes into play in a minute. Go to the next one, please. These are some of those streetscape shots, so you can kind of get a sense for what's going on at the street level as you come around the property. Next slide, please. Similarly here, looking back to the north, kind of how the property looks. Next slide, please. And then this is what we've got planned. So first class, Class A+, multifamily community, something that we worked a long time with staff on in terms of how to dress up and clean up the different public street right of ways and the different streetscapes, including some of the glass treatments along the eastern side on Broadmoor there, to make sure that it felt very pedestrian friendly, pedestrian oriented. One of the things I would point out is that you really have three sides of streetscape here. So we're not just doing a project that sits on one side of the street. We're doing our front door. It's a very visible site. It's gonna be the gateway to Mission as you come in from the north side on Metcalf. We think it's gonna be a great presence for the city. If we can go to the next slide, please. This is what the front door looks like. So this is facing west. This is where the guests will come in or potential new residents that walk up through there and then through those glass doors. You'll be able to look through the Community Center and into the public amenity courtyard area. Next, please. So kind of working our way around the building, this is from the northeast corner. And again, you can see here, even though there's garage behind those walls, we've done some work with our exteriors to make sure that it's got a glass presence, and then it feels more friendly from a streetscape perspective. Next slide, please. Kind of working our way down, we do have our bike repair shop and our bike storage, as well as our, we always do like a pet, you know, place where you can clean your pets up, pet spa is what they call it. So they have Yappy Hour, and they get together and they like have a six-pack and, you know, talk about their dogs and stuff like that. But we like to put that on a separate entrance so that when you're muddy or when you're bringing your bike through, you're not dragging it through the whole property or down the hallway. And then we set it up with stations where you can actually have tools and mechanical things to fit your tire and fix your bike and things like that, as well as a low and a high pet bathing space. So big dogs can come up in the big one and smaller dogs and go below them. Kind of coming on down, you can just see the look up Broadmoor as you look to the north. I think one of the best things about this project is that you really won't see the hundreds of cars that are gonna be parked there because it's all buried underneath the subsurface garage. And that's one of the main drivers of cost that we're talking about in our budget and in our project here. So that's a big part of the reason why the project itself can be spectacular in that you have that entire area above the podium to be used for amenities and courtyard spaces and really beautifying that. I think that you've seen other projects maybe have a wrap where that garage is, you know, more of a wrap with units. And so you don't necessarily see the garage, but you also don't have that amenity effect, that podium effect that you might in something like this. And that's what distinguishes maybe an A project from an A+. Can go to the next one, please. On the south end, what you'll see is grill stations, kind of a green buffer between us and the southern property line. And again, just continuing that streetscape effect, so it's a full 360 all the way around the property. Next slide, please. This gives you an idea of what will happen inside the project itself as far as the actual floor plans. Lower level, you can see is the garage with the various amenities we discussed on the east side running Broadmoor. As you come up to the main level, you have the clubhouse, you have the amenity deck, and then you have units throughout, and then we can continue up. What you'll also see is that we were very intentional. So the height of the project, where it goes to five levels, is on the Metcalf side. And then it steps down as you look more towards the residential side to the east. So that's kind of why you see the difference in floor heights there. Next slide, please. This again is just a site plan showing the overall, you know, overall project. I think what you'll also see inside that amenity courtyard is a resort-style pool, cabanas, a walking track. I mean, we do putting greens and bocce ball and whatever else they come up with. Inside the clubhouse, you know, now it's golf simulators and a pub room and a place where you can go do your various activities and things like that. So they have like wind-down Wednesdays and trivia nights. And one of the things that you do as an operator is it's really easy to leave your landlord, and it's really difficult to leave your friends. And so Block Multifamily Group, which is our management company, really does try to foster that sense of community between the residents. If you get to know your neighbors, you get to have a good sense of place, you're more likely to stick around. So it's good for us, it's good for them. And that's really the utility of the clubhouse and that amenity space. Next slide, please. So with that, I know all for discussion, but one of the things that I heard last time I was here, as it related to the TIF conversation, particularly from you councilmembers, what do we get? What does Mission get? And I think I heard that several, from several folks, I think you were just the one said it the most. And so I wanted to kind of run through maybe a list of what I see as are the benefits to the project and maybe what Mission gets. The first is just the removal of the call center, right? Removes the blight from the area, and it adds development in an area that is really mostly associated today with vacant office buildings. I can tell you that the former Mission Corporate Center we used to own is gonna trade for a very, very low number. We bid on it, we bid $400,000 less than the next bidder, but even that bid's gonna be very, very low. So what you're gonna see now is some of these things are gonna have to start turning over in order to drive development. But the good news is, I think- The good news is, I think this project, especially because it's a classic A plus project. Is going to be able to set the bar at a high enough level that it can be a catalyst for other development. So if you're having to benchmark rents and they're here today and we're going to come in and be here today. It's going to open up that door for other developers come in and say, okay, I think I can do something really spectacular. I think I can go reach a little bit more of my pro forma. And so what we're hoping is that our project really helps to prove out the market. And serves as a potential to help develop that whole area. Activating the area around Broadmoor Park and like I said, we're doing streetscaping really on four sides, but it really hits three of the Mission City streets with Fox Ridge fifty-six and Broadmoor. I think the other thing you get is a strong indicator of quality and that great presence as you come into the gateway of the city of Mission on the north side. So if you're coming down Metcalf. And you see this project and you see welcome to Mission, you're going to go, hey, this is a pretty great place and that's a great indicator. We talked about public art last time and I know. That's something that we're very excited about, something that we've done in our other projects. And we're more than happy to incorporate that into this project. We've talked about sustainable improvements. So we talked about the one green globe. I did provide Laura with some of the backup data that you had asked for with respect to the difference between one and two and the costs related to those items. But we are at a baseline already incorporating a lot of things that are sustainable into our projects. And in some instances, it would be silly not to, you know, you have to have EV stations because you need to meet the market. Right? And then there's the question of do you go above and beyond that? Do you prep your, your deal for even more? By putting in the infrastructure, the conduit, the power capacity is really one of your bigger issues. Things like that, but in addition to that baseline, taking it up to that next level with the one green globe. More buying power. So one of the things that Mission gets. When you have four hundred and fifty new people living in a first class project is. A lot more support for the restaurants and the retail along Johnson Drive. I think those businesses will be healthier for this project. Money for affordable housing, part of our discussion with city manager. Is part of that contribution to the city's Affordable Housing Trust, which you guys can do with whatever you want. And then TIF proceeds. So there is a component of the proceeds. That would otherwise go to Johnson County that will now be routed to the city of Mission. Which can be utilized again in whatever way you want in ways that are TIF eligible, which includes improvements along Metcalf. Or Johnson Drive that I know are part of the city's long-term plans. So I feel like it's a pretty good list. In addition to that, you get to deal with me for a long time. Because, you know, Block as a, as a developer, as an owner, we have yet to sell any of our multifamily projects that we've ever developed. And what that means is you get a partner that cares about the community. You get a partner that is going to make the investment the right way upfront. We're going to plan for the long term. We're not building this thing cheap so we can flip it in a couple of years. We're building this thing because we know we're going to have to deal with the HEAC system that we put in now and we're going to have to deal with. The expansion of that EV system when there are more electric cars or whatever the things are going to be in the future. We're going to be the ones there operating it. And so that's why we like to make that effort to go to the very, very, very top of the market. Because we're going to be competing with projects today, but we're also going to be competing with projects in five years, ten years, fifteen years from now. So we're here for the long haul. We appreciate the dialogue that we've been able to have with Laura, with Kevin. And with you folks. And so we look forward to kind of finalizing the way those numbers are going to come together. Over the next month and hopefully be back before you in December with an actual item.
Great, thank you. We will now turn to our public comment. So if you are participating through Zoom, please either add your comment in the chat feature and it will be read out loud. Or note that you would like to speak and we will call on you shortly to make your comment verbally. Please remember your comments or questions are visible to everyone in the meeting. If you are part of our in-person group tonight, please raise your hand but stay seated and we will call on you to come to the lecture and to make comments. When you make your comment, please state your name and city of residence for the record. Be conscientious of others trying to speak and speak slowly and clearly. If I need to confirm something that may have been difficult to hear, I will ask for clarification. Justin, do we have any comments online? Any comments from our in-person group tonight? All right, seeing none, I will now formally continue the hearing on fifty-six.
If you, yeah, I just offer a couple of other.
Sure.
Financial side.
Oh, yes, sorry. I forgot. I kept off on that.
Just so we can get this on the public record.
Yeah.
As part of this public hearing, again, Mr. Kimmel is unable to join us this evening, but he was here at the committee meeting and presented. Kind of his analysis, which is a standard part of our evaluation of any request for financial incentives. That memo was included in the packet, so I'm not going to go over it in detail, but just a reminder. Some of his key observations, the, the project, the block project does have a high estimated development and operating cost. Driven primarily by, again, the caliber and quality of the facility that they anticipate that they will, that they will build. Mr. Kimmel's analysis also ultimately concluded that there is a rationale for the city TIF assistance. For this project, but he did also note. That there's some flexibility for negotiation just based on the way the numbers. Have kind of mapped out based on the developer's original request. We have not yet reached a point where we're ready to make a staff recommendation. That will be the work that, that we'll do with Mr. Messmer and his team in the coming weeks. With the goal of coming back to at the December committee meetings with a kind of all of those deal points firmed up as best we can. The handout that Robin provided, Councilmember Loudon at the committee meeting asked for sort of that comparison and to look at generally. What are we generating in terms of taxes off of that property today? Versus what we would get under what a TIF revenue sharing scenario. So again, this is an illustration, not a recommendation. I think you'll recall. In Mr. Kimmel's presentation, I think he laid out three different scenarios. This is kind of that middle scenario. That looks at a full twenty-year TIF term, starting at ninety percent. And then decreasing in five-year increments down to sixty percent by year twenty. And so there were a lot of columns on this and I had to have a second cup of coffee after he sent it to, to make sure, but. I think the important things to focus on, if you go to the very far left, no, far right. And you'll see that five thousand seven hundred and ninety-nine dollars. That's sort of the base property taxes that would be generated from the property. As you know, there's a TIP district that is already established. So that base year is already sort of plugged in and programmed in. So assuming essentially the same city mill rate. Over the next twenty years, that property would generate about a hundred and thirty-eight thousand. If, if nothing happens and it stays in its current state. And then if you go over to that sort of next box where you're looking at the developer TIF percentage. And then the amount of that going to the developer and then the city TIF revenue over that same period of time. With this particular scenario of the anticipated eighteen point three million in increment that would be generated. Over twenty years, thirteen of that, thirteen point five would go to the developer and about four point nine to the city. So this again is not a recommendation. It's just an illustration of kind of where we stand today and. You can kind of see, I think, it, it's not an apples to apples comparison to the tax abatement projects that we've looked at. Just because they're slightly different animals, but I think this sort of helps to characterize. The potential benefits. I know that's been important to the council in your conversations about. Making sure we're at least as whole as we were or where we are today. So again. We are still discussing those specific deal points. We have a meeting scheduled for next week to really continue that discussion. And then we'll look forward to coming back in December.
Okay, great. So with that, we will now formally continue the hearing on fifty-six sixty-five Fox Ridge Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Project Plan. To the December eighteenth, twenty twenty-four council meeting at seven PM for further discussion and action. Laura, can you please provide information on the remaining steps in the process for our benefit and that of the public?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So this will appear as an action item on your December. To be determined committee meeting date. That's a conversation for a little bit later in this meeting. Most of the materials that have been in your packet through the month of November will be duplicated in that. You've seen the draft of the ordinance. The resolution, the one piece that is kind of missing is a really significant piece is. Draft development agreement that really outlines and. Solidifies the, the deal points. And so our goal would be through our conversations. With the block team to get to that point where we're able to make that recommendation. So we would kind of review all of that at the December committee meeting and then the public hearing has been continued. To the December eighteenth legislative meeting and then we would. You could either continue the public hearing, close the public hearing and then take action as you felt appropriate at that December eighteenth meeting.
Great, yes, Debbie.
Would we be able by the, the December committee meeting timeframe, get an idea of what the numbers look like based on Mr. Kimmel's? Possible suggestion of looking at fifteen years?
Yes, well, I mean, we will rerun those. I mean, I think it's, it's what was included in the packet. We'll kind of see how that aligns with the other deal points that we're negotiating.
Great. Thank you, Laura. Next would be issuance of notes and bonds, but we do not have any items related to the issuance of notes and bonds this evening, so we will move to our consent agenda. Our consent agenda has four items tonight. Our council committees met on November sixth and fully discussed each of these items. The committees agreed that the items listed on our consent agenda are routine enough to be considered under a single motion. If a council member or member of the public would like an item removed from the consent agenda, they may request that at this time. If not, I would entertain a motion to approve.
Mayor, I move the city council adopt the consent agenda as printed items four A through four. B.
Second.
Right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this item? Seeing none, Robin, please call the roll.
Hayden Chumposi.
I.
Ryard.
I.
Josie.
Hi.
Carpenter Davis.
I.
Kringle.
I.
Schmidt.
Hi.
Motion carries.
Right, next we'll move into public comment. If any members of the public would like to comment on an item not included on our agenda, now would be the time. If you are participating through Zoom, please either add your comment in the chat feature and it will be read out loud or note that you would like to speak and we will call on you shortly to make your comment verbally. Please remember your comments or questions are visible to everyone in the meeting. If you are in part of our in-person group tonight, please raise your hand but stay seated and we will call on you to come to the lecture and to make your comments. When you make your comment, please state your name and city of residence for the record. Also be conscientious of others trying to speak and speak slowly and clearly. If I need to confirm something that may have been difficult to hear, I will ask for clarification. Public comments are limited to three minutes per person. Justin, do we have anyone online? Don't see any hands in the audience, so we will move into planning commission or move into our action items. We do not have any items coming forward from the planning commission tonight. So we will move into our committee reports. Councilmember Schmidt, will you please provide a report from the Finance and Administration Committee?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The Finance and Administration Committee met on November sixth and considered three items. The meeting minutes and renewal of the inter-local agreement with Johnson County Department. Of Technology for IT Network Support for twenty twenty-five were approved under the consent agenda earlier tonight. Incentive requests for the fifty-six sixty-five Fox Ridge project was discussed earlier this evening during the public hearing and will be discussed further. At the December eight, well, at the TBD City Council Meeting in December. No items will be considered under the regular agenda this evening. That concludes my report.
Okay, great. Councilmember Ryard, will you please provide a report from the Community Development Committee?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The Community Development Committee also met on November sixth and considered three items. The meeting minutes were approved under the consent agenda earlier tonight. A contract with Orion Planning and Design for Phase One of a zoning code update and a tree preservation and protection ordinance. Will be considered under the regular agenda this evening. Title four, chapter four hundred series of the Mission Municipal Code is the city's land use code, more formerly known as the Mission City Zoning Regulations. First adopted in nineteen sixty-four, Mission's regulations were last comprehensively updated in two thousand and one. In July, staff issued a request for proposals or RFP to solicit assistance from qualified consultants in updating the city zoning regulations. The RFP envisioned a two-phase approach in the project. Three proposals were submitted in response to the RFP and two firms were selected for an interview. Interviews were conducted in September by an interview panel that included Councilmember Choji, Planning Commission Chair Lee. Laura Smith, Brian Scott, and Carrie Canneller. Based on the interview and further evaluation of the proposals, Orion Planning and Design is recommended for the project. Staff worked with Orion to bring Phase One fees into alignment with the city's budget of one hundred thousand dollars, a reduction of thirty-two thousand. Phase one includes an audit of the existing zoning regulations and development of recommendations and process for updating the land use code. Phase one will conclude with an audit report that will be presented to the city providing recommended, recommended updates to the zoning regulations and process for achieving those updates. Phase two will involve the actual drafting and implementation of the updated zoning regulations. Orion's proposal included a fee of two hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars for phase two. Once phase one is completed, both Orion and staff will have a better understanding of the potential scope for phase two. And will negotiate a more clearly defined scope of work and associated fee for the second phase. Upon approval of phase one agreement, the project is anticipated to kick off in January twenty twenty-five. Orion will work with a steering committee throughout the phase one process to solicit feedback on recommendations as they are developed. The phase one audit report is anticipated to be completed and ready for presentation to the planning commission and city council in the summer of twenty twenty-five. Mayor, I move the city council approve a professional services agreement with Orion Planning and Design for a phase one audit. Of the city's land use code in an amount not to exceed. One hundred thousand dollars with a phase two update of the city land use code to be negotiated upon completion of phase one.
Right, we have a motion and a second. Any public comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll open it up for council discussion. Any council comments or questions? Seeing none, Robin, please call the roll.
Josie.
Hi.
Kringle.
I.
Carpenter Davis.
I.
Ryard.
I.
Schmidt.
Hi.
Hayden Chumposi.
I.
Motion carries.
All right, at the July twenty twenty-four Community Development Committee meeting, staff presented a discussion item regarding considerations for a comprehensive tree preservation and protection ordinance. The discussion outlined the current narrowly defined tree preservation and protection provisions. In place as well as the larger issues which could be addressed in a comprehensive ordinance. Those items included tree protection, tree removals, and tree replacement. At the conclusion of the discussion, the governing body determined the most critical component of a new ordinance would be to educate residents and businesses. Of any changes that are ultimately adopted. Additionally, the governing body reached a preliminary consensus and directed staff to incorporate a new ordinance that tree protections, removals, and replacements. Would be limited to commercial development or substantial residential development as already defined by the ordinance. And that nuisance abatement provisions would be enhanced to allow code enforcement on any dead trees or limbs within the city. The governing body also instructed to engage the Parks Recreation and Tree Commission. And the Sustainability Commission, asking them to weigh in on the topic and propose ordinance changes. After discussion with both commissions. As well as through legal review, a finalized draft comprehensive tree protection and preservation ordinance was completed. The proposed comprehensive tree preservation and protection ordinance includes updating the city's list of permissible street and park trees. List of prohibited street trees, a list of prohibited trees for anywhere in the city. And technical cleanup regarding current ordinance provisions for tree care and planting within utility easements. Public right of ways and for property abutting, public streets, avenues, boulevards, alleys, and trails. Mayor, I move the city council approve the ordinances amending chapter two twenty and chapter two forty of the Mission Municipal Code. To address new standards and guidelines designed to preserve, protect, and enhance Mission urban tree canopy.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any public comment on this item? Seeing none, any council comments or questions? Yeah, Ben?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention that I did hear some concerns from resident about this and, and I think mostly was able to. Help understand the, the conditions under which this might apply to. You know, a residential piece of property and what kind of burden it might place on, say, a homeowner. So those, those specific conditions related to the substantial development. You know, I did take some time to read through our, our definitions and the code for that and, and certainly I think that any project that would, you know, involve this new ordinance language would. Would have to be quite substantial, you know, significant addition of. To a building or, or a change in, in the, you know, overall footprint on a lot, that kind of thing. But, you know, just, just to cover my bases, Laura or Justin, if you could take a moment and just kind of give us an idea of. You know, what, what kind of impact you think this would have on residential, like, you know, homeowners, single-family homes and under what conditions, just so we can make sure that's, that's fully clear?
Yeah, thank you. For us, it's been kind of just couched as it's got to be a substantial addition. Or a full-fledged, like a tear-down rebuild for those provisions to apply for. um, or a full-fledged, like a tear-down rebuild uh, for those provisions to apply for um, a s- of single-family house. And just recognizing the the additional kind of, I'll call it backstop for for that is um, through our permitting process, through through a development plan, staff will have the opportunity to weigh in on that and can use that kind of as the stick, so to speak, that if they're, that yes, these is, this is a project that we need to do those enforcements on. But and for your question in particular, the threshold would be pretty high for a residential and only on a substantial project. It's not people's trees outside of street trees, they, they're their trees, they can do what they want on their private property.
Okay, great, thanks. And just, you know, outside of a, uh, like a building permit situation, maintaining trees or removing trees or trimming trees, it doesn't really apply to those situations, right?
We did, there is a little bit of provisions that were already on the books for like, street trees and stuff like that. But yeah, otherwise, you know, there, yeah.
Okay, perfect, thanks so much.
Maybe just so it's clear for the public, could you say again what a street tree is, just briefly?
The tree on the front of the property within, usually ten feet on the right of way.
Okay. Yeah, Brian?
I I actually had one follow-up there. Am I correct, the the only other instance that it would affect, like, single-family homeowners is in the event of like, a dead or dying tree, it would be their responsibility to remove.
Yes, that, yeah, the other major piece that we is we shored up that language, moved it into the actual nuisance ordinance. And so, yes, that would be a situation where that could be, if you had a dead limb or something, that is a codes enforcement issue now, that you could, that we would require them to remove.
Am I interpreting this that, like, if the tree is dead, the whole tree would have to to go?
Generally, although the there is, so there can be a little nuance there. I mean, if it's if it's a limb that, and you can can, like, just the limb itself is dead and needs to go, it's a dangerous limb, but the tree might be okay, there might be a little bit of that. But if the tree is dead, then yes, the 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 action would be to remove the entire tree.
Any other questions? All right. Seeing none, Robin, please call the roll.
Chosey.
Hi.
Kringle.
I.
Carpenter Davis.
I.
Ryard.
I.
Schmidt.
Hi.
Hayden Chumposi.
I.
Motion carries. That concludes my report.
Great. We do not have any unfinished business tonight, so we will move into our new business. We do have one item of new business. Due to Councilmember Boltinghouse's resignation, we need to elect a new council president and potentially a new council vice president. We will begin with the election of council president. So I will now open the floor for all nominations for council president.
Mayor, I nominate Ben Chosey for the position of City Council President to fulfill the term expiring April two thousand and twenty-five.
Second. Right, do we have any other nominations for council president? Seeing none, we will take the vote, Robin?
Chosey.
Hi.
Kringle.
I.
Carpenter Davis.
I.
Ryard.
I.
Schmidt.
Hi.
Hayden Chumposi.
I.
Motion carries.
All right, and because Ben was our council vice president, we will now need to take nominations for council vice president. So I would now open the floor for all nominations for council vice president. Do we have any nominations?
Can I nominate myself?
Yay.
Okay.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, do that. Mayor, I would like to nominate Mary Ryard for the position of Vice President of the City Council.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, do we have any further nominations? Seeing none, Robin, please call the vote.
Hayden Chumposi.
I.
Schmidt.
Hi.
Ryard.
I.
Carpenter Davis.
I.
Kringle.
I.
Chosey.
Hi.
Motion carries.
All right, yes, congratulations to our new council president and vice president. And I appreciate your willingness to step up into these leadership positions. So the council president and vice president we've elected this evening will serve until April two thousand and twenty-five, when we will hold the two-year election outlined in our city code. Again, this was caused by Councilmember Boltinghouse's um, departure from the council. So we will now move into our comments from the city council. This is an opportunity from our council members to share any comments they would like this month. Uh, does anyone have anything they'd like to share? Yeah, Debbie?
Just wanted to report back, just briefly, I attended the National League of Cities last week in Tampa, Florida. Was an amazing conference, very well organized and very well done. Some of the things I brought back, I brought literature and swag. But one of the things I thought was of key interest was the electric car option for police. And that was one I kind of held, kind of hold on, kind of held on to because I was worried about the speed and what the requirements were in cases where we have emergencies. I was in totally convinced that this could be an opportunity for the city to really take on um, the option for using police cars for for emergency response. I brought pictures back, um, there's one in there with a little video, I'm saying, Dan, get on board, get on board. So uh, some really, some really neat options for us. A whole realm of the conversation that this took place about homelessness and what we're doing in terms of finding um, not only homes for people, but affordable housing. Um, some really, really first-notch speakers, um, Amazon head person was there. Lots of really interesting people and some some really good concepts to look at uh, city-wise. I have sent an email to Laura, Brian, and the mayor, I believe, about the city highlights and and what some of the capturing of the the highlights of the entire conference entailed. And it was first-class. So I did bring some literature back and I left it back in the table.
Great. Great, any other comments? Seeing none, we will move into our council committee liaison reports. These reports allow the entire governing body to stay up to date with the various activities of our boards, commissions, and committees. So first is, well, both council members are absent, well, one no longer is council member. So Councilmember Loudon and Councilmember Boltinghouse would have given our Sustainability Commission update, but they are not here, Justin, do you want to share?
I think the highlight was we had a pizza party for uh, the outgoing council member and another one of the members of the Sust- the Sustainability Commission who was, who was moving. And then also in recognition of Terry and her team and everything for the Go Green Fair. So that was, that's probably the highlight.
Excellent. Everyone loves a pizza party. All right, next we have Councilmembers Kringle and Schmidt for Parks, Recreation, and Tree Commission.
Uh, I think the major thing I want to plug actually is the Holiday Lights and Festive Sites um, event coming up on the sixth. I have been out of town historically for that almost every year, except for last year, which is the first time I really got to go. Uh, and it was a ton of fun. And I know that this year it's being expanded with with the holiday market that's being uh, put together. Um, just want to encourage anyone who's never had a chance, or if you have, to go again, because it it really is a lot of fun.
One of the things we kind of discussed at length was species of trees and which ones are well-known, which ones we shouldn't have. And a couple of people in Penn, if you want to add to this, uh, went to the Jackie uh, Gamison, gave us a whole indoctrination, if you will, about trees. And I'm telling you, that woman knows her trees. So she went into the specifics about the species and the the depth you plant and where you don't plant and what the widths are. I mean, I I was amazed at how much knowledge she has about trees and preservation. So it was a, it was a great uh, inset for us, I thought.
Great. And do we perhaps have another parks event tomorrow?
We do. Uh, we also have the ribbon cutting for Mohawk Park tomorrow at four o'clock. Um, because it gets dark now, uh, it will be chilly, so bundle up. Yeah.
All right, next we'll have an update from Councilmember Chosey on the Mission Magazine editorial board.
Thank you, Mayor, yes. Uh, so the the October issue, um, by all accounts received a lot of positive reviews, especially among the committee uh, who have, you know, we've sort of made an increased effort, I think, at at some editorial review and and just uh, you know, internal kind of quality control. And and I think everybody on the committee expressed some some happiness with how that's been going. Um, one of the things that that Laura noted that I think was significant to come out of this um, past issue, which was highlighting uh, women-owned businesses and women in leadership in the city, is that our business directory now has a a women-owned category. So if you want to get on the website and look at that, um, that that's something we didn't have before. And and I think this effort uh, has sort of helped us figure out where those businesses are. And and so that's a a big plus for for that feature of the website. Um, the January issue is is underway, we're looking at a year-end review of two thousand and twenty-four, which again, seems like it's been packed full of interesting and 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 nice things. We'll see, you know, a lot of uh, look back on things like the the lanes at Mission Bowl and our our big parks projects, or um, the Rushton Elementary School project and then several other, uh, you know, big stories that I think will will put into focus just how, you know, how eventful two thousand and twenty-four has been. Um, and beyond that, we will be meeting again on the second, uh, second Thursday in January.
Great. And finally, we have Councilmember Carpenter Davis with Family Adoption Committee.
Yes, this Friday at seven o'clock and the seven-thirty in the morning, we're going to be putting the packages together for the families that we've adopted, the the Thanksgiving food and that weekend's food. Um, so volunteers coming and we'll set up a little bit Thursday night, one more thing on Thursday night. And we're looking forward to it. We did add a social worker um, from Hocker Heights, yeah, um, to our group, which I I think has really benefited the group and and her perspective and working with closely with families. So that's been a benefit, so appreciate all that work and so. And so uh, the angel trees are set up right now. So if you have a chance, drop into the Powell Community Center and pick up a um, gift off the tree, you know, and help our families out this year. Thank you.
Great. Right, so next, um, we would move into appointments. I have been working with staff on various board and commission appointments and reappointments, and those will be coming forward at our December meeting. Um, I would like to publicly remind everyone that we are still seeking applicants who might be uh, interested in being considered for appointment for the balance of Councilmember Boltinghouse's unexpired term. So if you are in Ward One and you are interested or know someone who might be interested, please forward a letter of interest and resume to our city clerk, Robin Fokes. And that concludes my report for tonight. So Laura, do you have any other items you'd like to share with the council?
I think Justin has October interim financial reports, Robin has some business updates, and I'm sure I'll come up with something before we say goodnight.
Just real quick for the financial report diehards. Um, in the, in the the charts for the general fund revenue summary and for the general fund expenditure summaries, uh, the estimated budget numbers that were part of the work we did over the summer, we passed next year's budget, those are finally incorporated in there, so you're getting a more accurate comparison based on when we made those projections, so you can kind of get a better baseline. And where you would really see that, I think the number that kind of to highlight the most is on the expenditures page, at the very bottom in the right corner, we have the expenditure rate. So this is through October, so normally you would expect to be at about eighty-three-ish percent of your budget, we're at seventy-five. So we're watching those funds and and getting a nice firm grasp on the budgets. It's looking good as we head towards the year. And so that's all I would point out for the report for this month.
All right, uh, thank you. So we are welcoming a couple of new businesses, and most of you must have probably seen or heard that Mud Pie Vegan Bakery has closed their Overland Park shop on Ninety-Fifth Street and is getting ready to reopen um, on Johnson Drive at sixty-eight fifty Johnson Drive, which is where Nothing But Cakes was previously. So it seems like that's getting a lot of excitement, and I think that will be a great addition to our mission businesses. And then Wonder and Woe is a business that I was having a good time explaining to the mayor last week, but it's a really neat multicultural center of mindfulness um, for youth. So classes, yoga classes, spirituality classes, and they are going into the old Tyler's House space at fifty-nine oh three Johnson Drive. I think they've started some construction work in there, so keep your eyes peeled in the new year. Um, as you also may have seen in the news, um, Paul and Jennifer Doring have retired and Polly Dus has closed on Johnson Drive after about five and a half years. Um, their last day of business was October twenty-seventh, but I have heard um, from a few little birdies, that something really cool is coming to that space, so keep your ears open for that one as well. And then we have said goodbye also to Applebee's at sixty-eight hundred Johnson Drive and Tortilla Ranch at six zero two nine Metcalf. Um, I have three non-business things for you. One is Holiday Lights and Festive Sites, thank you, Councilmember Schmidt, for the great lead-in. So we're really looking forward to this event. Our Parks and Recreation staff has worked so hard for on Santa visits, smores, family games, hot chocolate, um, tree and menorah lighting with the mayor, and then a really elevated Mission Market sort of-esque experience of a holiday pop-up market with about twenty-five vendors. There'll be some dinner options, there'll be some gift options, there'll be some treats. Um, so December sixth, Friday, from five thirty to eight thirty at Johnson Drive and Reeds. Um, our window decorating contrast will kick off on Small Business Saturday, November thirtieth. So keep your eye on our social media, um, for the list of participating businesses. We have about twenty this year, and they'll have beautiful decorations in their windows and a QR code you can scan to vote for them. They'll be a fan favorite and a first, second, and third place, and voting is through December twenty-second. And then finally, if you haven't already, which some of you have, enter our name in the snowplow contest. It's open through the end of the day on Friday, and then we will narrow down to our top ten favorites. Um, and voting will be open through next week. And then once those votes are counted, we will announce the five winners. And Councilmember Ryard and former Councilmember Davis have entered some great ones. So if you have any creative thoughts, send them our way through um, the Survey Monkey and we'll be happy to add them to our list, and I'm happy to answer any questions. Um, well, I'll tell you that I was asked to turn off the thing that only let you enter once because some people um, that are neighbors of mine wanted to enter many times. And so you can enter as many times as you would like.
Brian, did you also have a question?
Yeah, asking for a friend. Uh, when will the judges be getting info on how to judge?
Judging info is going to go out next week, yes. So we had a few businesses that said like, hey, so winter really came upon us fast and we weren't quite ready. And so they wanted some more time to enter. So judging information will go out Monday, um, and then judging or viewing will open next weekend. The judges will get together mid-December and sort of tabulate some, some choices based on the rubric that we provide. Thank you for judging.
All right, thank you, Robin. Laura, I think we've got, what, our committee meeting date and some other things?
Uh, I think the committee meeting date is really, it's um, I think we covered everything else. I mean, it's a busy time of year and uh, it will be a lot on our December committee agendas. Uh, we're working on a whole variety of um, of things, but we outsmarted ourselves this year. So every year since I've been here, the uh, is it the Johnson County Wyandotte Council of Mayors has their holiday dinner on the first Wednesday of the month. And so we have traditionally pushed our committee meetings to the second Wednesday. Well, the invitation came out today and they have moved it to the second Wednesday of the month. So uh, the mayor asked me today whether it was feasible to go back to the fourth, and I said no, no. Um, only because that means the packets would have to go out next week and.
I didn't think about the holiday.
There's Thanksgiving and um, that would make everybody sitting around, slept in this room's head probably explode. Um, we're, so uh, we were looking at and wanted to poll the council and see uh, what availability folks might have for a meeting on December tenth instead of December eleventh. That would be a Tuesday night. If that's possible. We had also thrown the December twelfth in the mix, but in speaking with um, Mr. Messmer earlier today, he's not available on the Thursday.
Yes, that's Tuesday. That works for me.
Okay, we may have court, okay. Does that look like a good option? Okay.
Yep.
Six thirty on the tenth, yes. Probably at the community center, stay tuned, we'll confirm in the morning whether or not there's court. All right, thank you. Um, and I think that's it.
Oh. Debbie?
Oh, thanks for seniors tomorrow, yes.
And do you want to, do you want to, and then do you want to give any more details about the ribbon cutting? I think the playground will be open tomorrow.
Playground's open now?
Yes, um, we've, finally, we're successful in keeping people from walking through the port and place servicing and messing it up and the weather, so um, but four o'clock, you want to just kind of run through the program quickly?
Yeah, thanks for seniors, uh, delicious meal and uh, a whole bunch, two hundred and fifty of our of our seniors from the region will be there. We've got seven sponsors, so good turnout from that perspective, helped kept our costs low and lots of giveaways for those that are attending, free meals for those who are volunteering. So it'll be great, mayor speaking, we'll look forward to that. And then, you know, not too many hours afterwards, so the Thanks for Seniors is what, eleven, eleven to two, and uh, then our ribbon cutting is four P M. at Mohawk Park. It will be chilly and we'll try to make it as fun. Uh, we got a food truck called Grounded Coffee, so we anticipated the cold weather and we'll, we'll take care of any drinks and treats that they have to offer for those that are visiting, which is wonderful. Uh, stick around, we'll have some pictures after the ribbon cutting. And then, like uh, Councilmember Davis mentioned, we've got a setup for our holiday family adoption um, tomorrow night as well, and in preparation for giving away um, meals to those families. So busy week for us, and then we'll get at it after the holiday.
So busy week for us, and then we'll get at it after the holiday week, so appreciate all your efforts.
You also may have seen on social media, we're doing a promotion this year for donating, if you want to donate $20 to cover the cost of a turkey for a family. Do we ever find jars? No. We can find something. So if you, if you're interested in making a contribution, you can drop that off either at City Hall or the community center. We can't take it online, maybe next year, we'll get our act together a little sooner.
Yeah, I had seen some questions about that, so I wondered, is that something that'll be in the works for future years, donations?
We were able to secure the turkeys through harvesters again, so.
Okay.
But, yeah.
All right, well, we do not have a need for an executive session this evening, so[1782.61]